How are you doing, Ashley? Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to session, or to order for a study session. And Keith, I believe you're up first with GP 22-06, the general plan and the zoning for Lindsay 202 Industrial Business Park. Study session item number one.
Hello, testing. Good, all right. Good evening, Chair Simon, members of the commission. Good evening. So my study session presentation tonight is for the Lindsay 202 Industrial Business Park. See if the clicker works. Nope, no clicker. Okay, good. Okay, so this project that is before you tonight is located at the north, excuse me, the northeast corner of Lindsay and Jermaine Road. Obviously, close to the 202, as you can see there to the north as well, just to the south of that. And the new interchange at Lindsay Road that is actually going to be opening, I think, next week. So you can see that whole big project there. The project site is approximately 94 acres in size, and I will go over in just a second the details here. If it'll change, so Sal, it's still not. I don't have clicker. Cool, perfect, thank you. So before I get into the presentation, I just wanted to give you a little brief overview of the general, major general plan amendment processes. We have a couple of major general plan amendments on study session tonight, and you'll have more in the future. So as far as a rundown of major general plan amendments are concerned, so a major general plan amendment is any change of a non-residential, of a non-residential land use map classification or designation of 40 acres or more. So as far as that is concerned, I believe we had four that were submitted this year. They're required to be submitted before a certain period of time. And the process, as far as the process is concerned, it's a six, so what happens is when we first start that review, after they submit their initial application, we go through a 60-day agency review period, which is currently underway. I think it ends in a few, and I believe in a few weeks. So that's the first step in the process where we hand out, we send the actual request in a letter to agencies such as SRP, school districts, power companies, and so forth. So then the next step in the process, after we receive back the feedback from the agencies, is we schedule it for two Planning Commission public hearings. And this is in addition to this study session tonight. So the first Planning Commission hearing will be October the 5th. And then there's a second plant, publish, public hearing that is required for each major general plan amendment. And that has to be held at an alternate location. So in this situation, they will be at the Southeast Regional Library, that second hearing on October the 10th. And so Planning Commission has to hear it twice. And then once the planning, so the first one on October 5th is just kind of an informational type, where we provide you the information and you contemplate the decision that is before, all the land use changes that are before you, and then October 10th is when you make your decision. And then the last hearing that is required is town council action, and that by state law, that has to happen by the end of the calendar year that the application was submitted in. So that is the basic rundown of major general plan amendments. There's a lot more details to that, but that's kind of the basic overview. I just want, I just wanted to touch on that and remind you of that before I started my presentation, as you will hear two of them tonight. So tonight's goal is to just provide you information. It's an informational, kind of like an introduction to these major general plan amendments. I know the staff report says that we are requesting input, but we've actually decided that we're just gonna provide you the information, and we don't need input necessarily at this time. But this is just an introduction for you tonight for these major general plan amendments. Can you go to the next slide, Sal? So the request before you tonight is for a proposed, now, one thing we do need input on tonight. So on the major general plan amendments, we don't. I apologize for backtracking. The major general plan amendment, it's just an introduction, but the proposed rezone of this case is something I would like input on. So the two requests I have for Lindsay and industrial 202 is for, of course, the major general plan amendment, where it's going from office, general office to industrial on a 90-acre piece of the overall 94-acre property. And then they're also changing for a smaller parcel on the northeast corner of the property. They're changing it from general office to general commercial on 3.9 acres, and I'll show you that in a minute. And then the rezone is proposed to go from business park to light industrial on 90 acres. And then from business park to general commercial on 3.9 acres of property. So here's the general plan exhibit, so I can show you the breakdown and where each land use designation is proposed. So you see the large area. Everything's highlighted in red, the whole 94 acres. But you'll see the piece that's not in the northeast corner. The large piece is going, like I said, from general office to industrial. And then the little small piece in that northwest corner is going from general office to general commercial. Next slide, please. And then the zoning exhibit, very similar. And like I stated before, the zoning is going to light industrial zoning on the large piece, and to general commercial on the small piece for retail type of uses. And here's the proposed conceptual site plan. This site plan is still in the process of being finalized, as the design review case is also being reviewed concurrently with these. And you will see a more finalized version of this plan in a few months from now when we come back for the, for the design review case to present that to you. But the site, 87.90 net acres, it's about 94 acres gross. And you have, there's about 13, 1.3, excuse me, million square feet of warehouse or industrial space inside of those industrial building footprints that will be about, combined total, there will be about 54,000 square feet of office space. And then the retail piece up in that northwest corner is about 9,800 square feet of retail. And we're still working with the applicant on that building, whether or not it's gonna be one building or two. This one shows one, but we're still working with them on that, so about 9,800 square feet. And then there's about 1,800 parking spaces on this, on the site as a whole. And then the whole site has about 20% landscaping. So that's the proposed conceptual design, and you'll see more details when you, when we come through with the DR case. So, well, actually, can you go back one slide, Sal, please? So as far as, and I forgot to mention this, and I apologize. As far as the zone change is concerned for this project, it's not a PAD. This is a conventional rezone. So tonight, I'm not going to be introducing to you PAD deviations, because they're proposing to meet all of our code standards for setbacks, landscaping, building height, all the normal development standards. So that's why I'm not, I'm not diving deeper into that rezone piece, because this is a conventional rezone for light industrial, so. Okay, so as far as neighborhood participation or public participation, we had, the applicant held two neighborhood meetings. The first neighborhood meeting was in January, and about 20 surrounding property owners attended. And there was a lot of citizen input, and you can see on the bullets below. Attendees expressed concerns about traffic, how that would be generated by the site, especially large truck traffic along Lindsay and along Jermaine. Because you'll notice south on Jermaine Road is a residential neighborhood, and then you have a high school next door too, to the east. So neighbors were concerned how the large truck traffic would interfere with their neighborhood and with the high school and kids walking to school. So those were a lot of questions raised by, from a traffic perspective. There were questions raised by residents related to noise, and that fell into two categories. That's truck noise and noise generated by the potential users and the tenants. So they expressed concerns about that, had a lot of questions. The residents also expressed concerns about permitted uses in the light industrial zoning district that would not be compatible with adjacent residential communities. And then they also expressed, had questions about building size and proximity of buildings to surrounding uses. And then, of course, impact of those buildings on the adjacent neighborhoods. So that was a lot of the discussion at the first neighborhood meeting. The second neighborhood meeting, which took place on April the 10th, was, had about 14 property owners attending, and they had some of the same concerns and questions. But the applicant can provide more information on this second meeting, as staff wasn't able to attend that meeting. But it's my understanding that the concerns of the neighbors were decreased significantly. They still had some questions about some of these items and these bullet points, but there, a lot of their concerns were resolved and reduced. And I know the applicant can probably speak more to that. But I just wanted to bring up that second neighborhood meeting, and that they were able to work with the neighbors and resolve a few concerns. Next slide, please, Sal. So that's it. That concludes my portion, my presentation for this major general plan amendment and the, and the conventional rezone for Lindsay 202 Industrial Business Park. If you have any questions for me, I will try my best to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Any questions for Keith at this time? Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
So Keith, we can maybe have, maybe save this. I'm curious if Gilbert Public Schools has weighed in on this proposal, or if you want to wait till the next meeting after the agency review has concluded. I'm curious with its location next to Camp O'Verdi, if they've expressed any concerns or feedback.
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, very good question. I have not heard back from the school district yet. I'm hoping we will, but I have not heard from them yet.
And then I guess finally is, there was some concerns noted in the neighborhood comments in the narrative regarding uses. Says it sounds like some of the, the second meeting, some of those will work through or address. But could a PAD or development plan kind of establish prohibitive uses if that was one of the things that was talked about?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, to answer that question, we typically, we don't do that through PADs. It has not been the town's practice to limit uses in a PAD through a PAD or overlay district. So that is something that we have not done. I believe the applicant had spoken with the neighbors and agreed that maybe they would do that through some type of CCNR type of agreement, through CCNRs. And maybe Adam Baugh, who's the applicant, can address that. But I believe that that's, I believe, I'm not 100% positive, but I believe that is the decision that was made by the applicant, that they would do that through CCNR establishment.
Okay, thanks. I think as far as feedback for the rezoning, I guess I'd be very curious as the case progresses that I'd want to learn more about the traffic projected primarily along Jermaine, maybe to a lesser extent Lindsay, especially with the size of the development, as well as with the high school nearby, and also the development we just approved at Vel Vista in Jermaine. So it's curious because of the 202 off-ramp that, off of Lindsay, that originally wasn't planned. So this area has kind of developed with that assumption that it was largely residential to the south and so forth. So I guess I do got some immediate concerns regarding the scale, but I'm just curious to hear more about traffic and impacts. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
So they're not really requesting a huge change in zoning from one category to another. It seems like it's kind of an equal, equal, just slightly off. Is that an accurate assumption or a safe assumption?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Anderson, I mean, you're going from a business park zoning to a light industrial zoning, where you had offices and office-type, campus-type environment to a more of an industrial type of environment. So, I mean, it is a change, but from an intensity of use standpoint, I would say the intense, intensity is probably less when you, when you go from a business park to an industrial, from a, from a traffic generation standpoint. But from a use standpoint, from noises and things like that, you potentially have that element. But I would say that it's comparable from that standpoint, if you, if you try to weigh things out.
Yeah, and that's kind of how I'm looking at it as well. I mean, you're gonna have truck noise on the existing, the way it's currently zoned, as, you know, they could put whatever on the bike right, right now, compared to what their requested zoning is right now, which is, to me, it's, you know, it's like nables and oranges or something like that. It's just a slightly smaller shaped fruit. So I, I would not anticipate the concerns of truck noise and traffic being as harsh as some people are thinking compared to what's currently, you know, what somebody could currently build on there right now. So I just wanted to make sure that we were kind of on the same page with that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'd love to. So Keith, just out of curiosity, with the light industrial, just as a point of clarification, what exact types of activities under the Gilbert Code are considered light industrial? I'm assuming it's not like machine shops and quarries. Quarries clearly not taking a whole big hole, but.
Chair Simon, Commissioner Munt, oh, sorry, Vice Chair Munt.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you.
So, so the types of uses that are permitted in our land development code as it relates to light industrial are things like warehousing, light manufacturing. Nothing that generates a lot of noise. It's some noise, but not a lot of noise. Most activities are, take place indoors. You don't have a lot of yard, outdoor storage type elements. Maybe some outdoor storage, but, but you don't have a lot of activities taking place outside the building. So maybe artisan manufacturing, things like that. Warehousing, though, I believe will probably be one of the primary uses on this property. The applicant could probably speak more to that. But light manufacturing, like I said, artisan type, type things, and maybe some research and development type opportunities, things like that.
Right. Okay, yeah, and that's what I was saying, because I actually have my office. You know, I'm a consultant, and I have an office in a light industrial. A, the rent's a little bit cheaper, and B, the location was great. But the key was, there's not a significant amount of noise. The activities within this is like, you know, a rug shop, a, you know, trophy shop, and there's a mechanic. But, so, you know, I just wanted to clarify that to, on the record at least, to say that light industrial doesn't necessarily mean a massive amount of noise and work.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Does the applicant, Mr. Baugh, is there anything you'd like to add? No, not at this time. All right. Any other questions for Keith? All right, Keith, thank you very much.
Welcome.
We'll let you step back. We'll move on to item number two. GP 22-05, and for the general plan and zoning for the ranch. And I believe, Ashley?
All right. Thank you, Chairman and Commission. I'm here tonight to present GP 2205 and Z 2205, the ranch. These are also major general plan amendments, if you can advance for me. So this property is located between Warner and Elliott Roads off of Power. It's about a 311-acre piece of property. For a little bit more context, Cactus Yards is located on the north side of Elliott Road with Morrison Ranch, the bulk of Morrison Ranch located to the west. Mesa is on the east side of Power Road, so this is just right on the edge of the town of Gilbert boundary. So looking at the, the context of the area, we thought it would be a good idea to take a moment just to talk about the different development that is occurring in this area. This is an area that's rapidly growing. We're seeing a lot of development in this corridor. So if we start looking at the very north of this map, we've got the Power Commerce Center. That is an entitled project currently under construction. The Planning Commission approved the design review not too long ago. We've held a pre-application meeting and are in conversation with development for the item number two. That L-shaped parcel just north of Elliott Road for a similar product to that Power Commerce Center Phase One. And then we're also in review of the Fry's commercial development that is the magenta color on this map. We've also got a couple of other projects going on to the west. The item number four is a multifamily project that is currently zoned for multifamily. And the commission saw that as a study session item just last month. Item number five is a residential community that has been under development over the past couple of years. This was a major general plan amendment that went before Planning Commission and Town Council in 2017, 2018, about that time. And it included item number six, which is the industrial component of that project. And that is also currently under development. And then south of Warner Road, there's a couple other employment type uses that are occurring. Eight and nine are Hopewell. Those are entitled projects that are continuing to move through the development process. And then you'll actually hear about number seven, Keystone, a little bit later tonight on the study session agenda. So a lot going on in this corridor, so just thought it would be a good idea to talk about everything that we're seeing going on here, since this is a major general plan amendment. We wanted to make sure you, you kind of knew all of the moving parts and pieces here. So this request proposes to change the existing general plan land use classifications from industrial, office, and general, commercial to largely industrial uses, along with some commercial on the corner. In a company, accompanying that application is a rezoning application where they're proposing light industrial and general commercial zoning. They are looking to remove about 179 acres of business park zoning, and then again, transition that to the light industrial and general commercial. So a little bit about the history of the site. This property was originally part of the Morrison Ranch PAD back in 1998 when it was developed. So it's always been anticipated to be employment type uses. Then in 2009, it was removed from the Morrison Ranch PAD and became the Morrison Ranch Business Park PAD. The Morrison Ranch Business Center. And they added in some business park uses along with commercial, with the hopes that it would spur additional development on this site. That hasn't happened, and so, you know, now here in 2022, we have a proposal to develop the site as light industrial with those commercial corners. So looking at the current general plan, the site is within the Power Road Growth Corridor, which anticipates employment type uses, job generating uses. Because of its proximity to the 202 freeway, it's got some good access. And it also has good proximity to the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. And so for, for many years, this has been identified as a growth corridor within the town of Gilbert. Additionally, as you can see on the map on the right, the subject site is partially within what we identify as a vertical development overlay district. Those areas are intended to focus development vertically, so that we can get greater density, greater intensity of uses. And so this, the eastern side of this project is located within that area. I will note that it allows for additional height for business park uses and, and commercial uses, not light industrial. So this wouldn't qualify this project for an increase in height automatically. So along with the rezoning application, they are submitting a development plan. When a development plan accompanies a PAD, it locks in the site to that development plan. Any future development has to substantially comply with this plan as it gets adopted. And so that's important, because, you know, this is one of the pieces that we would seek some feedback from on the commission tonight. You know, are there things that should be modified with this development plan that you see? So just going through it, it is 16 total buildings. They vary in size from 70,000 square feet to 600,000 square feet at the largest. The smaller buildings are oriented along Elliott and Warner and the Power Road frontages, because that allows for greater visibility of those smaller users that would, that would occupy those spaces, so the smaller tenants. The larger buildings interior to the site, so to the west. I will note that those are about on this current development plan. They're between 200 feet from the property line to 237 feet from the property line. So because of the scale of the development, if you look at this plan, it doesn't look like they're that far away, but it's a really large property. So just thought that I would point that out. And then they've got two commercial corners. The one along Elliott Road, they're anticipating various pad users, restaurants that would kind of mirror the development we're seeing on the north side of Elliott Road, where that Fry's center is. On the Warner Road corner, we're anticipating, or the applicant is anticipating, a fitness center, a fueling facility, other restaurant type uses. The applicant has submitted a design review. We're in first review of that for those commercial corners. And so you'll, you'll be seeing that in a study session as this project moves forward. So just to go over the process, I know Keith just did this in his project, but I thought it a good idea to just reiterate that this is, this is following the same major general plan amendment process. These applications have to be submitted by May 31st of the calendar year, and they have to be completed by the end of the calendar year. and they have to be completed by the end of the calendar year that they're submitted in. So the major general plan amendment has a little bit more onerous requirements in terms of notification. So as Keith mentioned in his presentation, we are in the sixty-day agency review period. So we're seeking feedback from adjoining communities, other interested parties. You know, SRP, for example, Phoenix Mesa Gateway. Tonight, we're holding our study session just to introduce this project to you. So you can start to think about it. We'll be back before you in October, looking for you to make a recommendation. And so this is just kind of that initial introduction so that you can start to think about it. There will be two Planning Commission public hearings, October fifth at your regular meeting and then a special meeting on October tenth that will be at the Southeast Regional Library. And then Town Council will have to take action on this item by the end of the calendar year. The applicant has held two neighborhood meetings, one in March of this year and then another one just last week. I've got some notes on those meetings. So the first meeting in March, there were seven attendees. There were some concerns with the departure from the original plan. And then there was questions about building heights and setbacks and things like that. In the September first public hearing, there were a hundred and thirty attendees. There was a lot of concern about the suitability of this site for the industrial type uses. The size of the buildings, the height of the buildings, the proximity to residential. And then of course, folks expecting that when they bought their homes that it would develop with the current proposed plan and, and the employment mix. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project. And then if you've got any, any feedback for us on those deviation requests, requests related to the rezoning or the development plan, happy to hear those as well.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. Any questions or comments for Ashley? Yeah, Commissioner Blazer.
Thank you. I'm just curious how, what, what the town or staff's take is on losing the, the vertical development associated with the property. You know, if the zoning changes, then you kind of lose that. What's, what's staff's take on, on that?
You know, we, we have a number of locations throughout the town where we've got the vertical development overlay. And while we always encourage folks to take advantage of that because we, we do hope to have intensity of development. You know, ultimately it, it is up to the applicant whether or not they, they would choose to, to take advantage of it. So even under the current zoning district, if an applicant's vision didn't require them to go that tall, we, you know, they may not. So it's not necessarily a guarantee that, that we would even get that type of development. I, I, I don't know that that really answers your question, but...
No, it does. Yeah, no, that's perfect. You answered it perfectly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
Ashley, kind of along the same size, along the same lines as height. So the PAD request is to increase the height up to sixty-five feet. Is that on the entire parcel or, or the proposed area? Or is, have they targeted certain buildings or areas for that increase?
I'm going to have Josh help me with this question. I was pinch hitting for him tonight. And so he, he knows better the conversations he's, he's had with the applicants and, and how they're looking at maybe targeting that.
Okay. Good job pinch hitting, by the way.
Thank you, Ashley. Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioner. For the, the height increase, is that what you were asking about?
Yeah, up to sixty-five. I was just curious if they were targeting certain buildings or if they were asking for it throughout the, the proposal.
That is a good question, Commissioner Bianchi. And to answer that, right now, the request is across the entire site, but just through further conversations with the applicant, since we are still in review, we have kind of determined that they may only need them for potential accessory structures that may, you know, be requested or built, you know, as the tenants fill out. And we're looking to really nail that down, but that's what it's more leaning to right now with the, the current talks that we've been having.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Josh? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Josh, quick question for you. So is the height, is that the only requested deviation in the PAD? Or other others?
Commissioner Anderson, that is the only requested deviation for the site.
Okay, so is there any chance come October, when's the next, October fifteenth? That they could come back and say, hey, we have twenty more deviations here that we want to get into this? Do they have that opportunity to do that or do they have to flush it all out now?
Commissioner Anderson, technically they would, but they would have to go back, have another neighborhood meeting, get more feedback from the neighbors because they are changing that deviation request from what they presented to the neighbors. So technically they could, but it's highly unlikely.
Okay, so the, because we're already in September, those two hearings the next month, chances are this will be the only deviation they're requesting?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Yes, Josh, could you go back to the timeline? So the October tenth, that's the meeting that's going to be at the Southeast Library?
That's correct.
And that's us?
Correct.
That is Monday of, that is Columbus Day, by the way, if you're... Ten, I'm sorry, October tenth, I believe is Columbus Day.
Apologies. I'm checking my calendar.
Chairman, Colum-, it is Columbus Day, but Columbus Day is a not, is a working holiday for town staff. It is not a day that offices are closed.
Oh, good for you.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Josh at this point? All right, Josh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you October fifth to present again. Actually, we'll see you in a couple minutes. Item number three, actually, we'll see you right now, Josh. GP twenty-two dash thirteen and the zoning for twenty-two dash twelve, Madera Gilbert.
All right. So Madera Gilbert. Madera Gilbert is a proposed rezone and minor general plan amendment on the southwest corner of Higley and Ray. The applicant is proposing, sorry, still trying to get my bearings. Applicant is proposing a minor general plan amendment for eight, a little over eight acres from general commercial to residential fourteen to twenty-five dwelling units an acre. The rezone that they're requesting is to change approximately four acres of general commercial to, sorry, multifamily medium and multifamily medium and shopping center with a planned area development. Next slide. So just a little background, I know that I did kind of go in depth into this in my staff report, but this corner is in the Gateway Character area and there's only a few sections of the town that we have specific, a specific vision for, I guess you would say, you know, downtown being one of them, Gateway Character area, Morrison Ranch, Santan Character, where in our general plan and in this latest one as well as in the last one, we have specific goals that we use to guide development in this area. As I have noted on this, the screen, we're, we're going for a traditional neighborhood and village design, promoting that interconnectivity, multimodal oriented design with the, with the residential work and integrate really with its surroundings, any adjacent employment, schools, places of work, places of work, so on and so forth. So I mean, when you think of, of Gilbert, a walkable community is not exactly the first thing that comes to mind with our town. However, there are certain areas like Epicenter, which is right across Ray Road to the north of the site. Cooley Station, which you see on the screen, Verdi at Cooley Station, that is also that type of development that is within the Gateway Character area. And generally speaking, this is exactly what we're looking for from this particular character area. The request, as I mentioned, it's to change fifteen acres of general commercial land use to seven, reducing that to seven acres of general commercial and then adding an additional eight and a little over eight acres of residential fourteen to twenty-five dwelling units an acre. Then with the rezone, they're requesting to change from shopping center with a planned area development. This was part of the former Lions Gate PAD, going to be removing it from that and change the current zoning shopping center to a little bit of general commercial, multifamily medium and then keeping some of the, the existing shopping center. They're also requesting a planned area development. They're requesting deviations to increase the max building height, reduce the front landscape setback and then kind of reduce slash increase. They're rearranging how the, the landscape on this whole site interacts. Go next screen, Sal. So this is a good representation of what they're requesting. Now, the applicant, from the very beginning, we've had a few developments in the past that have come in on this, this parcel and kind of your traditional, what you would consider a traditional commercial corner within Gilbert. You know, very auto-centric, car washes, drive-through coffee shops. And we've, we've had extensive conversations with the property owner about, you know, the Gateway Character and kind of what our vision and our expectations for this, this was. So when this applicant came in, and keep in mind, this is four or five iterations into their design proposal based off of neighborhood feedback and, and staff input. But what they're trying to accomplish here is something what you could kind of consider similar to Epicenter across the street to the north. And it's really a true mixed-use development with ground floor, commercial offices and commercial retail spaces with loft above residential towards the, the north in the kind of three buildings that you vaguely see on this, this representation with little multifamily to the south. The issue that we're having is the town, we currently don't have a true mixed-use zoning district. So the applicant is kind of at this point and we are in the process of, you know, the beginning stages of creating one so we could accommodate developments like that. But because we don't have one, the applicant is having to kind of use different zoning districts to accomplish the goals of this mixed-use development that they're, they're planning. So as you can see, you know, instead of just the shopping center that it is right now, general commercial to the north, which allows loft above by right, loft above commercial and then to the south, we have the multifamily medium. Now, just real quick, Sal, can you go to the next? One more slide. You'll see there's that, that central drive where they have represented the loft above commercial in the red shadings. Now, on the south side of that internal drive, they do have plans for more commercial with loft above residential, that, that's what they're proposing. However, we've been advised that we can't, we can't have split zoning on one building. So as of right now, everything south of that drive has to remain, you know, one zoning district. So in this case, they're requesting multifamily medium. And they wouldn't be able to implement a loft above on that south side of that drive until we can get a, a multifamily zoning district in here and they can kind of rezone the entire site to accommodate that. So that is something that is planned, part of the plans. They just can't implement it right now until we can, we can get our, our zoning district set up. Can you go to the previous slide, Sal? So this is a quick overview of the deviations that they're requesting. As I mentioned in my staff report, they're requesting a reduction from the minimum landscape setback in adjacent to Ray Road. I'm not entirely sure the justifications for that reduction. So as I find out, I will inform the commission of that. They're also looking to rearrange the landscape on kind of how it's divvied up because they are forced to use multiple zoning districts. They're requesting to, for example, on the general commercial, as you see there, increase the minimum landscape area from the required fifteen percent to forty percent and then reduce the multifamily medium proposed landscaping from forty percent to twenty-eight percent. And the idea behind that is so they can just spread the landscaping across the entire site. So it's not really matching up with the existing zoning district boundaries that they have proposed. But their goal is to have the exact same amount of landscaping that you would have, just spread across differently the site. But as you can see, there in that, that table that I have at the bottom, I, I kind of did the rough numbers on that. And they are a little shy from that ultimate goal of providing the exact same amount of landscape and open space area by about five thousand square feet. So we're still working on that with them. And then they're also requesting to increase the maximum building height from forty-five feet to fifty-five feet just due to increased ceilings required and kind of needed for the, the commercial, the ground floor commercial spaces just to accommodate that increased height where typically you'd only see, you know, maybe ten feet in a residential unit. It's a little higher in the, the commercial units. So it's not to add additional, not to add additional residential units in those loft above areas, but just to accommodate that. Next slide, please. Go back. So just to reiterate, what they're proposing with this requested rezone is to, as I mentioned, kind of mimic what Epicenter's doing across the street on, along the north side. Ground floor commercial with loft above residential on the northern half of the site. However, on the south, southern half, we see the three-story yellow buildings. Those would be purely multifamily, multifamily units. And I believe that is all I have for you today. There is a design review that has been submitted for this. This will follow. But we just wanted to get the commission's feedback on their proposed zoning district. We don't have any particular items that we would like your input on other than just your general thoughts and input on their proposal for the rezone. And then just any sort of input that you would like to provide staff at this time. We're still currently in first review. I just wanted to get in front of the commission and just get your thoughts just because they are going from regular commercial to a kind of a unique product that we don't see that often within the town and just wanted to gauge the Planning Commission's temperature on that. Sal, if you can go to the public participation. So there have been, just real quick, there have been three neighborhood meetings held for this site within the past year, beginning in October of last year. They initially came in requesting pretty much all multifamily across the entire site after discussions with staff and at that first neighborhood meeting. One of the biggest sticking points with residents was that they were extremely against losing commercial on this site of the amenities and the services that would be provided with that. They went back to the drawing board after hearing those, talked with staff, actually quite a bit, presented a second option at the February, at the February neighborhood meeting, went back and tweaked it again, just based off more resident feedback. I do have, I did attach some of the primary residential input and emails from the first neighborhood meeting. The first one, there was about seventy residents that attended and then second one about thirty and this last one about fifteen to twenty residents. And there are still concerns about introducing more housing units and apartments on this corner given that there is Epicenter already. And then on the southeast corner, there's another apartment complex. Concerns with traffic. There have been requests, you know, why not just keep it the entire ground floor commercial so we don't lose any commercial space and have, you know, just loft above, above that ground floor retail. And that's, so it's been a very interesting and lively debate with between residents and the applicant on this as they've kind of gone through this process over the past year almost. So just in conclusion, just looking for a commission feedback on obviously anything you'd like to give input on, but just, just your, your thoughts and feedback on the, the proposal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Would you like to start us off with questions for Josh? Nobody? Oh, Commissioner Anderson.
Josh, a question for you. So from what I understand, because this is a PAD, the site plan that we're seeing, is pretty much what they're getting locked into. Is that correct?
Commissioner Anderson, there will be an attached development plan to this and yes, we will be locking this and especially given how much time and work and essentially we're buying into what they're presenting here. And we want to make sure that if the rezone and general plan gets approved, that this is what we're going to get. There's no other option without having to go through the whole process again.
Okay, so a question for you on the MFM zoning portion of the site. Are they meeting the LDC garage requirement? Do they have to? If they do, how are they doing it? Because I'm not seeing how they are. I see one garage building that's in the southeast corner of the lot and that doesn't look like there's twenty-five percent of the covered spaces in that garage building. So do they have to meet that requirement? And if, if they do, how are they doing it?
Commissioner Anderson, that is a good question. Yes, they are. So if you look at the four-story building B, in the upper right-hand corner, there's actually underground parking that they're proposing. I believe it's seventy-five spaces. I'm off the top of my head. So they are using an underground parking for I'm off the top of my head. Um, so they are using an underground parking for, um, and it's gonna be exclusively for the residential, um, units that live above those commercial areas. But yes, they are required to and so far they are meeting that requirement.
Alright, any other questions or comments for Josh?
Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
Josh, it looks like the units went from just over three hundred down to like two seventy-four. Are they still within that twenty-five units per dwelling acre? Or are they slightly exceeding that?
Commissioner Bianchi, also a good question. They are slightly exceeding that and we're still working that out with the applicant right now. They're currently sitting about a little over twenty-six units an acre on the multifamily piece. And this is one of the, the, um, kind of hardships of having to use multiple zoning districts across this site even though it's one unified development. For example, across the entire site, the dwelling units per acre is give or take about sixteen, I believe, units. But since we have to rezone at this time, the multifamily on the bottom, that is the twenty-six units per acre for that bottom half. Um, but they are still required to meet that density, um, be under twenty-five per the land development code and we're still trying to figure out how to make that happen.
And not having them have to bump up to a multifamily high.
Correct.
Classification, okay. And then my other question was on parking and it stated in there that it meets codes, but if we're doing some mixed use here with commercial, are we looking at a shared parking scenario here? Do we have any initial concerns? I know you said it was first review, but, you know, do we have any parking concerns with, with all those uses going on?
There are, um, some, we're, we are still in ongoing discussions regarding that. Um, there is a possibility for, uh, potential shared parking, um, a shared parking on the site. In order for them to do that, they have to do a substantial parking study and it goes through a whole, um, kind of a process just to ensure that no matter what, depending on their use, that we're gonna have adequate parking on the site. So, we're still working through that, but that has been part of the discussion.
Okay, yeah, so this would result in multifamily, I think on three of the four corners. So it sounds like there's still some more to unpack here. Okay, thanks.
Alright, anybody else? Mr. Johns.
Hey Josh, thank you for the presentation. Um, so has staff, uh, have they put any kind of support on, or is there any kind of staff support? Is it too early?
Commissioner Johns, it is too early, but I will say that after, through all the iterations that we have gone through, this is more in line with the goals and vision of the gateway character area, um, at this time.
And there's not a vertical multifamily zoning that you said that, uh, applies? How did Aggro- Agrotopia kind of get, didn't they have kind of a similar type product?
There is not a current, uh, multi, um, mixed-use zoning district. Not entirely sure how Agrotopia, it is a very long ordinance, uh, assigned to that. And I believe it was done through their ordinance of how they accomplished that with Agrotopia and Epicenter. It's about five hundred pages, um, and I haven't read through it recently, but I believe that's how they did that.
Okay, I was just curious, so. And I really, the height restriction or the, um, deviation on the height really doesn't bug me too much, especially what they're trying to do here. So I think it's an amazing project moving forward. You guys have done a good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Blazer.
Yeah, great, great presentation. I just get the sense, just to echo, I, I just get the sense that there's been a ton of work put into trying to deliver a, a, a project that, that meets the town's, uh, vision. And, um, a- and as you presented, there's a lot of challenges with it and, um, I just commend the, the applicant for, uh, the effort towards, uh, delivering a quality, quality project while, while maintaining the town's vision. So I, I, I think it's a great project personally.
Anybody else? Mr. Faye.
Yes, please. Josh, I, I don't know if this is the Josh approach or the town's approach, but the, the approach, I, I applaud the approach you're taking of we're, we're trying to do a combined thing here. So we're kind of trying to combine the way like parking is being handled, okay, or, or the landscaping, although actually the, agree with the, everything you said, including the, we're still trying to work on that part of the, um, but, uh, I don't have any problems with any of the deviations. I assume the Ray Road will part was because it gets wonky up there on the north end.
I made that similar assumption.
Pencil it out, but that was my assumption. The only piece that I had a problem with was the, once you try to kind of smooth the aver- do a weighted average to get the landscaping and you come up with a number that I, the weighted average ideas, that's where I would go to. When you come up short, that's not quite. And I think this is something like this has come here. Either this literal project, literal project has come up before and it just doesn't look like you can't pencil out a few thousand extra feet on, on this one. It looks like the space is there to do it.
Yeah.
Uh, but otherwise I applaud, the, the approach you're taking is, is what strikes me as the intuitively reasonable one of, we're trying to kind of combine a few things and you're kind of basically combining the standards and smoothing them out, which I think that's exactly the right approach for both the developer's well-being and for the town's well-being. So, attaboy. Or maybe it's, I don't know if it's the Josh approach or the town's approach, but either attaboy or atta town, attaboy to the town.
Commissioner, this has been definitely a combined effort between myself and my whole team. This, I've had many sleepless nights over this parcel over the past two years, so it's definitely been a combined.
We probably ought to single out the town engineer personally for the phenomenal job he personally has done on this as well.
I would agree.
Thank you for that.
Alright. Any other comments for Josh? You know, Josh, I would just, um, echo the sentiment that's been shared this evening. I, I do recall this corner being proposed to us in a, I believe it was a, you know, potential plat layout at one point that was just looked like it was thrown together. So I really appreciate the distance that we've gone on this. Um, I think that would complement that other side of the road with epicenter that's happening on that side. I think it would be great. So, keep up the good work. Um, my only concern with this would be parking. I just want to make sure that there's enough to sustain both the commercial and the residential. So, otherwise, um, did you get all you need from us at this point?
I appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, um, with that, we have one more agenda item, uh, on the study session. Um, and I'm not sure how long this one would take, Josh. It's you as well?
Yes, it is.
Keystone. Do we need to take a break and come back to it after, or should we push through? How long do you need?
I can make it quick.
Alright. Commissioner, are you okay pushing through at this point? Alright, push through, Josh. Uh, item number four, general plan twenty-one dash oh-three and zoning twenty-one dash oh-five, the Keystone.
Alright, one moment please. I apologize, I didn't mean to load up the, uh, study session agenda this month. Alright, um, GP twenty-one oh-three, um, twenty-one oh-five and DR twenty-one sixty-five Keystone. This is actually a project you've seen before. In about A- April of last year, I brought it forward to the planning commission for, um, discussion regarding the proposed, um, general plan and, uh, rezone. Ashley, go ahead. This is, uh, proposed minor GP and rezone and actually annexation of the currently, um, county site from, um, I apologies, uh, I apologize, from the current general plan designation is residential five to eight. Um, they're requesting an increase of density from, uh, to eight to fourteen. And the zoning, it's currently zoned, uh, Maricopa County Airport District Three, which is an equivalent to Arlight Industrial with an airport overlay. Um, just talk, you know, kind of restricting certain uses in close proximity to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. Um, and they're requesting a rezone to multifamily low with a planned area development. Um, just to give a little context for what's kind of going around the site. Um, across this, so this is a little east of Recker and Warner. Across the street is the Warner Commons, um, industrial project, which is currently, um, under construction. And then to the east, we have Hopewell. Uh, two Hopewell industrial, uh, projects that have been, recently went through the rezone process with the town and were approved and, um, and are currently, the second one, which is actually directly east and adjacent to the site, not shown on that, that blank parcel in between, is currently in design review right now. You should see that next month. Um, to the south, we have a lot, a lot of large lot, um, it's a Wildcat subdivision acre properties, um, surrounding this development. Um, next slide. So, our requested input for this is, once again, it's just to re-familiarize the planning commission with the proposal since it's been quite a while. Just ask for any input they, that you have on the requested planned area development, the deviations, and then of course, any, any input that you have on the design, overall design and the elevations presented on this. Um, next slide. Once again, Ashley, sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. Um, so what the applicant's proposing on this site, it is, they are requesting multifamily low, but what they're requesting is, they're proposing a, uh, kind of mixture of products, um, close to, um, sorry, I guess you can't see it. I actually outlined these, I thought I outlined these. But the northern half of the site, the, the really long piece, that's, um, more of a condo product with its side onto Warner Road, uh, kind of to match up with what else is existing along Warner Road. But then to offer a proper pren- transition to the adjacent large lot residential to the south. And, you know, on that bottom leg to the, the west, they're proposing those single-story detached for rent bungalow units that we've seen quite a few times coming throughout the town. So the idea here is to provide a, a transition between the existing, you know, large lot residential with the more intense industrial units and developments that are kind of surrounding this, this project to the north and to the east. And, um, staff definitely feels that it is, the transition, it does, um, we believe that they're going for what they propose is, is a pretty decent transition between the variety of uses in this area. Um, next slide. Uh, there's my, I forgot I had the cool little graphics that covered. So this is, uh, just kind of an overview of their, uh, requested PAD. So as you can see towards the north, you do have those condo units with the one-story resi- residential to the south. One of the requested deviations is to reduce the landscape setback along that southern boundary of that, that drive aisle at the western entry point. And that was primarily due to staff's request of keeping that entry drive lined up with the existing drive on the other side. It is only a reduction in that area. Um, in fact, we do have an exact, um, in our draft ordinance that we're writing up. There's an exact measurement of how long that, that deviation would be for. So it is definitely only in that area and only as needed. And then the additional, um, deviation requested is a reduction, the separation of, uh, from buildings between or from twenty to ten feet, which is common for these smaller bungalow units, seeing that the intent of that twenty-foot building separation, and that's not a building setback, that's just the separation between the buildings internal to the site. That's so, the intent is, in the code is so we don't have these large hulking buildings, you know, just smashed up right next to each other. Whereas these are, you know, the smaller, um, one-story residential units and, um, definitely, there's no, I guess, visual outward visual impact of reducing that. Um, next slide. So this is just an overview of their current, um, site and landscape package. Um, as I've said, with those condo units, um, towards the north, they are side on to, uh, Warner Road to give a little variation. One of the biggest concerns that staff has had with this is that we would just see a wall of two-story units along Warner Road, lack of any movement, lack of any variation. So what the applicant's proposing is to, pretty much about every third, uh, building, they restrict that, that closest unit to Warner Road to one story. So we do have some variation. It's not, like I said, that horrible wall of residential units from the arterial. Um, next slide, Ashley. So these are some of the proposed elevations on the bungalow units. We are still, there are still a few, uh, units in here that need some work, but overall staff feels like that they are generally going in, in a good direction with these units. Um, next slide. Um, they do have quite a bit of variation, but they are kind of going for a ranch-esque Americana. I guess how you would describe it, architectural style. So while they do have a lot of variations, their goal here is to kind of keep it in the same family. Have some unity, but still providing visual distinction and variation among, among the different units throughout the complex. Um, next slide. And I'll just quickly go through these, Ashley, if you just want to go over these, um, every now and then. But as I mentioned, they are kind of going for a ranch style, um, on these elevations and s- staff has worked, um, with them through, where I believe we're in this, at the tail end of the second review. There are a few revisions that we're asking, but we're also asking for any input on, on the elevations and from the commission just to, uh, give that added second, set of eyes, um, if there was any concerns or any suggestions to these elevations. Um, and that is, no, go ahead. Um, that's a perspective that they provided, you know, uh, from Warner Road, just to better visualize it. We know that it's always hard to kind of visualize, uh, elevations in 2D. So we've been trying to get them to provide, provide, uh, renderings of these. So just in conclusion, um, we'd like input on the proposed, uh, minor GP and rezone, any input on those deviations and then of course, any input on the overall site design and elevations. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Josh. Comments, questions for Josh?
Commissioner Bianchi.
Sorry. Uh, Josh, real quick, I didn't notice it, they're going with the multifamily zoning, but are they proposed, uh, rental units or actually purchased units on these? Do you know?
Commissioner Bianchi, that is a good question and right now it is proposed to be rental units. Um, we would have had some sort of condo plat come in by now if they were going for the for-sale product and so far we haven't and just in talks with the applicant, rent, for rent is probably where they're gonna end up.
Okay, that makes me feel a little bit about it, better about it, considering it's right under the flight path, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm wondering why everyone wants to change our general plan. Pretty soon I think the general plan's gonna start taking a personal offense to it, I don't know. On this. But, um, but yeah, I think that was it. If it, if the rental, that helps me digest it a little easier considering it's, again, right under the flight path and the, the county's overflight district. But, um, as far as I actually like the townhouse elevations, maybe more so than the single-family or bungalow. But, um, based on the designer materials, first review, I actually like the look of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, uh, Vice Chair.
Yeah, my only comment was that the multifamily looks very nice. And the single-family look like ice shannies that I used to take on the lake up in Wisconsin. So, just, just saying, you could probably do a little bit of work. And maybe it was just that front elevation, the side looked okay, but they, they look very, very hut-like, so.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Alright, anybody else? No? Uh, Josh, quick question for you. The single-family or the bungalows down at the, um, south side of this, there's no drive aisles that connect any of those, so it's walking path.
Correct.
Are we concerned at all about the parking, the way that it's laid out? I mean, I'm looking at the, the southwest and the southeast corner of that and that person trucking their groceries from a parking spot. I mean, seems to me like it's gonna be quite a haul and a hundred and twenty degrees.
Chairman, that's a good point. That I, I honestly, I hadn't really thought about, so that's, that's a genuine good point.
Yeah, I mean, just, just a thought. I, cause, cause really if I'm looking at it, I'm, I'm kind of putting foot to math, I'm looking at probably three hundred, so about eight hundred yards.
Think you're right, yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty degrees, I'm trucking my groceries. That might be a little, so, I, I, and I don't know how to solve that problem. It's just when I look at this, I think, man, those, that back row of houses, what's it gonna look like? And then also, what's the access point from, uh, you know, for police and fire, if they need to get back to that? Um, I'd, I'd be curious what type of comment or, or concern they may have. Maybe there's none. Um, but just that, that's kind of what comes to my mind. Otherwise, I, I, I think the, the condo units in the front, I like it. I like the way that they've, um, given some deviation to, uh, uh, the, the frontage on Warner Road. Um, I don't really have much of a problem with the little, uh, bungalows. There are a couple in there that I would say could be dressed up a little bit. Otherwise, I'm okay with it. I would just really be curious that back row, if, if we're doing a disjustice or disservice to individuals that potentially could live back there. And if not, they sit empty and now it becomes a, an eyesore issue. So, just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright.
I just, one clarification, are the bungalows going to be rental units as well?
Uh, Vice Chair, that is my understanding that this whole project would.
Yeah, it's like that product where it's the smallest. Okay, thank you.
Alright, Josh, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, um, with that, we'll move on to, um, discussion of regular agenda items, uh, regular meeting agenda items. Um, to my knowledge, we don't have anything that needs to. Um, to my knowledge, we don't have anything that needs to be pulled off of consent, um, is there anything that anybody would like to hear, or are we good with the consent item the way that they are? We're all good? Um, Josh, are we still looking at a continuance on item fourteen?
Chairman, that is correct.
Okay, so are we good to move that to consent?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll um, propose to move item fourteen to consent, and then um, I'm assuming, Keith, we still need to listen to fifteen and sixteen at this point, or should we move that to consent as well? You have a comment card on fourteen?
It's continued, though.
Uh, it's continued, um, so we can still hear the comment, but that'll be continued to a date future. So, if you'd like to comment, that's fine. Okay, so we'll keep that on to the, on the uh, uh, well, that'd be communications from citizens, so we'll move it to consent.
Here, Simon.
Yes.
It's up to you on items fifteen and sixteen, whether to keep them on the regular agenda or move them to consent, that's, that's your prerogative, so.
Okay, um, does anybody have any reason to keep fifteen and sixteen on the non-consent?
Okay, we may have a card for fifteen and sixteen. Never mind.
Okay, so we do have somebody wishes to speak, so we will hear both fifteen and sixteen. Alright, so what we'll do is.
I'm sorry, Chairman, you would have to pull um, fourteen off of consent to allow the person to speak, to comment.
Okay.
We couldn't do it as the call to the public.
Understood. Okay, so we will leave the uh, agenda as is, and we will go to a quick five-minute break, we'll come back at six-twenty, um, and start our meeting. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order, uh, for our regular meeting. Uh, we will go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, alright? Alright, can I get a roll call, please?
He usually goes in, but I will start, uh, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Faye.
Here.
Commissioner Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Munt.
Here.
And Chairman Simon.
Here.
Um, Mr. Chairman, all are present.
Alright, we have a quorum. Um, I will go ahead and uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda items discussed.
Thank you, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Alright, I have a motion by the Vice Chair to approve the agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, motion carries. We'll go ahead and move to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. I do have um, Karen Wolf, um, and I'm not sure if you're still here, but, okay, we, um, this is, item is actually on the agenda, Agenda Item Number Two, so if you'd like, you can come to our October fifth meeting, and we will be hearing from the public at that time for that. Yeah, what's that? Um, we'll need to grab you on the mic. Come on down to the mic.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it, it's sounding a little bit like a public comment, and since it's already on the agenda.
Okay, well.
We were not advised in the first public meeting, only a few, uh, few people. The second public meeting came out as a email at twelve oh nine from the community council that you had five hours to say you wanted to go and get requests to be in part of that. So, I just think that the developers needed due diligence to.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Um, we'll get with staff and have conversation about that, if you'd like to come to the October fifth meeting, definitely like to hear that.
Well, I just, one thing to consider.
Alright, thank you, sir, I'm sorry, this is on the agenda and you're not, we're not taking comment on that item. Thank you. Alright, um, Mr. Mosley, you have, it just is communications from citizens, you'd like to speak? I'm not sure what agenda item, if there was agenda item, at this time, we're not taking comments on those, if it's just a general um, comment.
Saying if it's, if it's on any agenda ever, we can't talk about it in this meeting?
On this agenda that we have, right now, we're not taking comment on any of the agenda items on this agenda.
Right, but you told her she couldn't talk about something that's on the agenda next month.
She can come next month and she can discuss it at that time.
But today it's not on the agenda, so why can't she talk about it today?
It is on the agenda, it's on, it's on the study session.
That's a different meeting.
No, it's on the study session, and we've been advised that, that that, at this time, is not allowed for comment, she can come back on October fifth and, and make comment at that time.
Speak to the gentleman after and clarify with him.
The meetings in October are scheduled during Gilbert's fall break, when everyone will be out of town. The last public meeting was held on, the last neighborhood meeting was held on Thursday before a four-day weekend of Labor Day. The first one was held um, on the evening of the presidential State of the Union. The first notice had misspellings. The, the, the placement of the signs was behind our neighborhood by a jogging trail fifty feet away from the, the road. We haven't had a meaningful opportunity to respond to the developer, to give our input, they, they muted us all, they read selective questions during our question, our thing, and it's being pushed forward.
Okay, um, I'm.
Why, why can't we talk about it when it's not on the agenda today? It's not.
It, let me, I'm gonna pass this to council, um, because we're being advised that, at this time, that is on the agenda, so I'm gonna pass it to council.
Uh, and th- thank you, Mr. Chair, um, for the record, Elena Horkes, uh, Assistant, uh, Assistant Attorney for the Town of Gilbert. Um, and just to clarify, which item would, are you looking to speak to?
Talk about the, the ranch development proposal.
Item number two, on the study session.
No, I think it's fourteen.
The question that you have, sir, is one of, one of procedure, um, and at the time that the commission heard that item, it was in the study session, and by definition, the study session doesn't allow for comment, uh, public comment at that time, cause it's a, a time for, it's, it's.
Five o'clock and this one's at six o'clock.
Correct, so.
So on this meeting's agenda, even though you printed them on one page, they're not?
I'm sorry, so, um, so if that is your question, it's considered all part of the same agenda? Um, and so since that, uh, that item was on the study session, where there is no public comment allowed, where we are in terms of procedure, where we are now, um, it would allow for a public comment, or anything that was not on the agenda. So if you had something pertaining to, you know, a very specific comment pertaining to your address, or, you know, any, anything else, um, but just, it's just where we are in the process, uh, and since this item has been, uh, noticed on this agenda, just in the study session, uh, we did, we don't allow it at this time. But, you come back, um.
If I don't go to Hawaii, I can, I can cancel all my vacations, I have one minute to speak. I'm not asking for anyone to respond, I just wanted to share my thoughts, and I guess I'll have to share them during the other thing. You know, I, I object, I think this, this isn't right, it's not how the meetings are supposed to work. Um, it's not on the agenda today, it's not on this meeting's agenda, it was on the other meeting's agenda.
Alright, appreciate you coming out, um, and we've got you on item number fourteen too, so if you'd like to comment on that, when we get to that, you may. Um, are there any other members of the community that would, or members of public that would like to comment on any items not on the agenda at this time? Alright, not hearing any, um, we will go ahead and uh, we don't have um, council here this evening, correct? Scott's, Mr. Sepp.
Council's online.
Oh, da, Councilman September.
Yes.
How are you?
I'm recovering, thank you for asking, Chairman. I'm sorry I couldn't be there this evening, um, recovering from a really ugly bout with COVID, but um, I did want to uh, do provide a, an update, liaison update. So last time we talked, uh, I let everybody know that our fire chief in Gilbert, after forty years of service, had retired, and uh, Chief Joe Bush is now, you know, enjoying the next season in his life, and you know, we wish him all the best in that. Uh, our new fire chief, I'd like to introduce very quickly, is uh, was our assistant chief, Rob Duggan, so he is our new fire chief of Gilbert. Uh, Rob comes with thirty years of fire experience, um, with uh, with Gilbert Fire and Rescue since nineteen ninety-nine, and he's been the assist, he was the assistant chief since twenty fifteen. Um, Chief Duggan began his career in Casa Grande, Arizona, as a firefighter/paramedic back in nineteen ninety-five, and uh, and Chairman, you'll be glad to know that he is a graduate of Gilbert Leadership, Class Twenty-Five. Uh, another exciting thing that's happened here uh, in the last week, you know, uh, as we near build-out, it's very important that we balance our, our land uses to make sure that we have um, a good mix of, of high-paying jobs and tax base to support our infrastructure long-term. And so I'm excited to announce that Owens Corning, the world's largest manufacturer of fiberglass composites, including fiber optic cable, has signed a lease uh, for a commercial building in Gilbert. It's over three hundred thousand square feet, and it's going to provide two hundred and fifty jobs to the Town of Gilbert, and that project should be completed here uh, in a little over two years, but we're excited to announce that, and uh, it just a, just another, just another great uh, example of the hard work of our economic development team, and, and our, and our team Gilbert overall. Thank you, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you very much, Councilman, we appreciate the update. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearing consent item agendas. Um, all items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar, the commission may by a single motion approve any number of items, where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall with, uh, shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Yes, Chairman, you do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, consisting of DR twenty-one dash one oh one Residence in Hotel, ST number ten, ST twenty-two dash oh six Waterson Central, Phase One, Parcel One. Number eleven, ST twenty-two oh seven Waterson Central, Phase One, Parcel Three. Number twelve, ST twenty-two oh eight Waterson Central, Phase One, Parcel Two. And number thirteen, DR twenty-two dash seven six Blizzard Beer Systems.
Alright, I have a motion to approve the, approve the consent agenda items, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Fay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, not hearing any, the motion carries. Right, public hearing non-consent, non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During a public hearing, anyone wishing to comment in separate, uh, support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form, indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard, once you, uh, the hearing is closed, there will be no further co- public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. Um, I do have a couple of cards up here, are there any other cards that like to be submitted at this time? Alright, not seeing any, Josh, we'll move to you, item number fourteen, DR twenty-one dash eighty, uh, Morrison Ranch Commercial Center, you'd like to give us just a quick overview of what this is before we move to public comment?
Evening Chairman, Commissioners, um, this is, I'm sorry, I don't have the case number in front of me, but number fourteen is a proposed uh, fries and retail facility um, located on the northwest corner of Power and Elliott. Um, currently is finishing up uh, review um, with the town, they are almost there, uh, just a few items left to address before we can move it to a public hearing, but definitely believe that you guys will be pleased with the work the applicant has put in on this, it's. It's gonna be a nice addition to Gilbert when you guys see it next week, so. Just a few items to address, uh, before we can move it forward for official approval.
Alright, so this is officially continued to next month at this point we're looking? Okay, perfect. Uh, Mr. Mosley, you, uh, have down here that you'd like to, uh, make comment and that you wish to speak and you're opposed to this item? Um, please state your name, uh, for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
I'm Brian Mosley, I am a resident of Morrison Ranch and, uh, I apologize for, for being emotional. Um, I'm an attorney and I just disagree with the, the way that that was being interpreted. This, uh, fries is, is, is a good use, um, but what I'm not seeing considered is that, that, uh, this section of Morrison Ranch and the section to the south that we're not talking about today are part of a, an existing pad in which, um, as Morrison Ranch has developed, it was approved first in ninety-eight. Many of the different sections have, have broken off to their own pads, but they've remained a part of Morrison Ranch and it's a part of the Morrison Ranch character area. And so, um, all of these things are, have those considerations within them. And this property in particular is part of that where, um, under ordinance twenty-two nineteen from two thousand nine, they agreed that there would be, um, sorry, that there'd be a property owners association that would provide all of the landscaping, um, including a six plus acre amenity that would be available to the residents and to the workers within this, this district. And it seems to be that this is just being sold off in pieces and that no consideration is being given to follow what was promised. That was approved, as I say, in two thousand nine over the objection of, 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 of the town park departments because they took away, um, the golf course that was gonna be a part of this originally when it was all agreed. Uh, the mayor didn't, didn't vote for it, but in, you know, in exchange, they at least said that they were gonna continue all the open spaces within the Morrison Ranch character area, within the Morrison Ranch master plan, that they were gonna provide additional acreage of open air space that was gonna be paid for by the businesses in this area. And it seems like that's not being, you know, considered or, or weighed, um, as this is kind of just being sold off in pieces. We have a school, we get some industrial uses, um, and there doesn't seem to be any consideration of, of keeping it within the, the, the character of, of Morrison Ranch and, that it has been approved and keeping it within, um, these requirements that, that they're supposed to, to do here. Um, including building out all of the interior, interior streets, um, as, as marked in the plans that they submitted. Um, that they agreed to do all these things, they agreed to have the, the kind of streets that Morrison Ranch has. And it just seems like this is just being ignored, um, just letting them build, build however they want. And like I said, I'm not opposed to the fries going in, but I'm opposed to this idea of just sweeping under the rug the obligations that the, the town put on this rezoning and this PAD for this whole area. And the requirements to keep it in consistent with the area, keep it consistent with the theme of the area and, and, and to finish the plan of the Morrison Ranch neighborhood. And so that's my comments is that, um, I think that the planning department needs to, and that the planning commission should consider the obligations that go with this land already, um, and the obligations that were made, you know, to, to the residents nearby to fill this out. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, I just have a quick question, uh, for you, sir. You say they, who, I'm unfamiliar with the requirements that are put on the property. Do you have that, or Josh, do we have that where there's stipulations with regards to how that development's supposed to happen?
I mean, I can talk to Josh about the ordinance twenty-two nineteen, that this was approved, this, that this PAD. Like I say, when it moved out of the Morrison Ranch large PAD into this specific Morrison Ranch business PAD, there were all these things discussed and included and, and voted on. Um, and, and they, you know, I mean, the owners of the land, even when it's shifted to different owners, um, they, they have this, this obligation and they have this, this is what, you know, as we've been talking about, um, when there's a PAD, it's, it's supposed to develop. You know, you're, you're giving them a rezoning, you're letting them do something, but you're holding them to something.
Okay.
And this PAD, they're not being held to this at all.
Alright.
It's just kind of being swept under the rug.
Alright, well, this will be continuing, so we will hear this next month. Josh, maybe we can discuss some of those things, bring that up, um, so we know exactly what we're talking about and address that. Alright, thanks, sir. Oh yeah, I need a, a motion to approve the continuation of item fourteen.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number fourteen to be continued to October fifth, and that's DR twenty-one dash one eight zero Morrison Ranch Commercial Center.
Alright, I have a motion to approve, are we okay putting the date on that motion?
Chairman, we recommend that you do put the date on then, they don't have to re-advertise it.
Okay.
But the motion, um, is not to approve, the motion is to continue the item to the date specified.
Correct.
I thought I said approve to continue.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We have a motion to continue. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Commissioner Fay, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, motion carries. Uh, we will move on to item fifteen and sixteen, the general plan amendment, uh, for, uh, general plan twenty-one dash oh nine and zoning twenty-one twelve for Fred's Place, a minor general plan amendment and a, a rezone of, Keith.
Chair Simon, members of the commission. Let's see if this clicker works now. It does, fantastic. I'm gonna move this up a little bit here. Alright, there we go. Um, this next project that I have before you tonight is, as you stated, it's for Fred's Place, it's for a general plan amendment and a rezone, a PAD rezone. The site is located in the Cooley Station area of the town, in the Gateway character area. It is located at the northeast corner of Wrecker and Williamsfield Road. Um, as you can see on the site map in front of you, the site is currently vacant land, well, portion of it is. You could see that, um, there's a portion of the, the land that's vacant, it used to be farmed. And then you can see next to it is, 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 uh, a property with a bunch of farm type of old farm equipment and things that, that's, I believe it's fenced off, it's been there for quite some time, uh, that used to be used to, um, for the operation of the farm, operation for, uh, uh, the Giesel family. So here is Cooley Station today, and this property, like I said, is located in that area and was zoned under one of the original Cooley Station, uh, PADs. So the applicant is currently, um, in that site, in the, the red rectangle is where the Giesel family's property is. And you can see around it, um, are various types of uses across the street, you see a fries, uh, marketplace with some shops along Williamsfield Road. To the, to the west, to the east, excuse me, is a, is an apartment complex. Um, you've got, um, single family and other multifamily, uh, uh, single family, higher density type, single family uses to the north. Catty corner from this property is the Verdi at Cooley Station, um, commercial development. Then you have some apartments, some more apartments and some vacant land that is, um, going to be coming before you in the very near future for approvals. And, and you even have some single family as you go further south and east in Cooley Station. So you've got a mixed bag of uses in this Cooley Station development, so I kind of wanted to show you this site in context with the rest of Cooley Station, so you can see how it fits in to the Gateway character area and the Cooley Station, uh, plan that has, was, original master plan that was created. So, um, the applicant, the request before you tonight, the applicant's actually proposing to basically, to remove this site from the Cooley Station PAD and create their own PAD. So, but first of all, um, their, their request is a minor general plan amendment from Village Center uh, to residential eight to fourteen dwelling units per acre on, on nine point five acres in the back half of the property, and I'll show you the map in a second. The second request is for Village Center, go from Village Center zoning to general, to, or sorry, Village Center land use designation in the general plan. Excuse me, to general commercial land use designation on about four point nine acres. And then like I stated a minute ago, they're pro, proposing to create their own brand new PAD. And so they're going to be changing it from Gateway Village Center to multifamily low on nine and a half acres. And then from Gateway Village Center to Shopping Center on, um, uh, four point nine five acres right on the hard corner. So I, I, I brought this before you in, I believe it was December-ish, I can't remember the exact date as a study session item. So I know it's been quite some time, so I, I'll refresh you on a few of the little details here, uh, as far as the PAD is concerned in just a moment. But here's just the general exhibit, so you can see right along for the general plan, you can see right at the hard corner is the, about the four and a half acre site for, for, um, for the general commercial land use designation. And then the part that wraps around it to the east and to the, to the north is for the multifamily residential portion. And here's the zoning exhibit that shows the zoning designations, so you can see the separation between the two districts that are proposed. Um, the propose, here's the development plan, so the development plan, um, the whole site is about fourteen point four seven acres total. And it includes, of course, the commercial on the corner, which is about twenty thousand square feet of commercial. And you can see on this development plan that, um, you can see a shops building, uh, shops A and shops B and then, and then pad one building, which is the only pad building with a drive-through on this property. The other buildings are going to be divided up into shops, uh, spaces, I don't know how lar, we don't know how large all those shop spaces are going to be exactly yet as the tenants, I don't believe all of the tenants have been chosen. I wanted to, and, and then also, um, sorry about the single, about the residential portion to the north and east, that is ninety-three units of residential, they will be apartment units and, uh, some of them are look, look like, they're like duplexes, look like duplexes. And they're single story and, and some are two stories as well. So it's kind of a mix as far as the heights of them are concerned and the number of units in each building. This, uh, project, there's also a companion application with it that you will see come before you in the next several months for, um, you, it, it's gonna be called Traditions at Fred's Place instead of Fred's Place. And so there is a DR case for the residential portion, and there's also a separate DR case for the commercial portion. So you will see two different DR cases coming before you, probably on the exact same agenda, that's our goal. And you will be able to see the design of, of both, uh, development types and uses. But primarily, as far as this development plan is concerned, how, uh, town staff, town staff and the applicant have worked very closely together to, to create a, a a cohesive development with, with good connectivity and, and, um, horizontal or a mixed use, uh, integration between the two different use types. So you'll see sidewalk connections from the commercial to the residential, and you don't see it on this plan, but there will be some little Ramadas in the parking lot that will kind of help foster and, and create a higher quality environment as people walk from the apartments to the shops, kind of into, further integrating them horizontally. And the shops buildings along Williamsfield Road, we have worked really hard with the applicant to pull them as close to the Williamsfield Road as possible. And you will be able to see with the design review how that streetscape and the design along Williamsfield Road is, is, and more of a neo-traditional pedestrian-friendly type of environment where you do, you have a lot of hardscape and some trees. And it will match very, it'll look very similar to what it looks like along Verdi at Cooley Station. That, uh, strong relationship of the, the pedestrian with the buildings and you won't see it, it won't look traditional along Williamsfield Road. Wrecker Road will be a little more traditional with a little more landscaping from shrubs and things like that. There will be a lot of hardscaping too along Wrecker, so you have a, a Gateway Cooley Station-esque, uh, vision that was, has gone into the streetscape design and the cross-sections that are associated with Wrecker and Williamsfield Roads. And then also Haskell to the north, there is, you will notice that there is a a drive access and a drive aisle that goes from Haskell through the residential to provide a connection from Haskell to the commercial so that residents that live in the developments to the north do not have to go all the way out to Wrecker Road and get back out onto Williamsfield Road and take a left into the development just to go and eat at a restaurant. They can, they can drive right from Haskell straight into the commercial. So we thought that was very important to make that connection, and we are very appreciative that the applicant worked with, worked with us on that and that, that was accomplished. So that is a huge part of this development. The residential has some central amenities, um, typical amenities of, of, of this type of development, and there is a perimeter trail that goes along the east side. Uh, but, but again, more of these details, you will be able to see them as the design review cases come before you and we'll drill down a little more and look at these details. So from a zoning standpoint, from the, from the PAD, as it's, it's concerned with deep, with the, um, site development regulations, the applicant is proposing a few deviations. This table represents the deviations for the shopping center portion, the commercial portion of the development. So you'll see that along, um, Williamsfield Road, it's a side setback based on how our code defines the setback at a cor, uh, corner lot. You will see that they are going from, um, on Williamsfield Road, they're going from twenty feet for the, uh, side setback to down to eighteen to create that neo-traditional pedestrian-friendly streetscape environment. So we, we were okay with them bringing those buildings as close as possible to the street in this situation, we, town staff supports that. And then, and then the other one is a side along Williamsfield for landscaping, also eighteen feet. And then at the arterial to arterial corner at Williamsfield and Wrecker, um, the code requires a fifty foot wide by two hundred and fifty foot long landscape setback in each direction. And town staff has, is supporting them from moving from, uh, fifteen feet to eighteen feet wide to create that Cooley Station streetscape that we've been talking about. And then also, it'll still be two hundred and fifty feet long in both directions. And then along Wrecker, it would be twenty-five feet wide, so a little bit wider. So that's for the, the shopping center portion. The multifamily, the deviations, you can see them all highlighted and, and, or not highlighted, they're bolded. So for the multifamily, there's a few more deviations, so you'll see setback deviations along Wrecker from five, twenty-five to twenty for the units. Um, along Williamsfield, you, I'm sorry, along Haskell, you'll see a ten foot reduction. Because if you notice across the street on Haskell, oh, oops, sorry, it's not even on this plan, I apologize, I thought it was, I forgot. Across the street on Haskell, on the north side of Haskell are units that front Haskell, where they have their primary entrance of each unit, um, right along Haskell and a sidewalk connection from Haskell straight to the units. And they're setback about twenty or so feet, but these are gonna be setback a little, these are gonna be cl, a little bit closer to the street than those are. Cause these have a different type of patio situation. But the actual livable space will still be, be about twenty feet, which matches the, the unit, the homes to the north. Um, the east boundary, they wanna go from twenty feet to fifteen feet for the setback. Um, and the single story, um, separation between buildings going down from twenty to ten, which is pretty typical. That's what we've been seeing a lot of requests for in a lot of multifamily developments. To reduce that by ten feet, we're okay with that. The side setback along Haskell, again, down to fifteen feet. And then for the multifamily, uh, the side setback, these are all interior boundaries. So from, uh, multifamily to commercial, um, it's required to be twenty feet. And since this is a master site plan with, from the commercial and residential have created a master site plan for Traditions at Fred's Place. And so they are requesting those setbacks to be zero because that is right in the middle of the drive aisles. And you can see those property lines on the north boundary of the commercial and the east boundary of the commercial, those are, those are the property lines that I'm referring to that they're requesting to be, have a zero foot setback. And I believe that covers all of the deviations. Just wanted to let you, to note that, um, you'll see on the multifamily portion, a deviation to reduce those setbacks to zero, I'm sorry, commercial side is not required as that is a standard that's already allowed per the code. And you'll see a note of that in your staff report. So, um, town staff supports all of the deviations. So we don't have any issues with, with, with that standpoint. Uh, from a public participation, uh, standpoint of the development, um, the neighborhood meeting was held in September of twenty twenty-one. And approximately twenty property owner, owners attended, they had a few concerns. Of course, they had a concern with a number of apartments being constructed in the media area. Some residents would rather see businesses and restaurants developed in this area, which there is a commercial component of this development, so it's not all apartments. And, um, increased traffic congestion and, and then, and then necessary capacity to, for schools to accommodate the added children, things like that. And then some residents would prefer retail like Verdi at Cooley Station or Ray and Higley. But so, so that's kind of like a lot, some of that is loft above at Ray and Higley, this is not that. But they are bringing the buildings close to the street, kind of. But they are bringing the buildings close to the street, kinda similar to what they're doing for Verdi at Cooley Station. So it kind of, kind of is similar to that to a certain extent. But since that neighborhood meeting, Town Staff has not heard from one surrounding property owner. Even after the notices were sent out, we didn't hear from anybody. So I just wanted to, to note that and let you know that we haven't heard from residents since then. Uh, Town Staff recommends that you forward a favorable recommendation to the Town Council for both the minor general plan amendment and the rezone. And I'm open for any questions that you may have concerning, uh, this request, uh, by the applicant. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Are there any questions for Keith at this time? All right, is the applicant here, would like to give a presentation? We do have one comment from community, so I don't know if you wanna present first and then do community, but up to you.
This is Chairman and members of the commission. Sorry, I'll just say a couple of things. I won't go through a presentation. And then if there's a question that we need to respond to, uh, we'd be glad to come up and do that. But, um, obviously just want to, uh, thank you for being here tonight. My name, for the record, is Greg Davis with I Plan Consulting, uh, here in Gilbert. And with me tonight is Fred Geisel, uh, who's in the all dressed blues over there. We didn't let him out of prison. He just, uh, likes dressing that way. And, uh, Jason Barney, who represents Circle G. Uh, this property's been in Fred's possession since the seventies. It's a legacy project for them and are very excited to present it to you. Uh, just real quick, uh, the current zoning on the property, um, really allows for a lot more intensive uses, which is one of the reasons that we haven't had a lot of neighborhood opposition. Uh, you know, currently there's a density of up to 50 units per acre, six stories in height, um, very intense commercial designation. So, uh, that wasn't part of Keith's presentation, but I think it's important, uh, for you all to know that. So as, uh, neighbors do talk about the uses proposed, we have to always compare it about what can be built today. And we think this project is a much better solution for the area. So I'll conclude my presentation with that, and we'd be glad to answer any questions of yourself or the residents.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? No? All right. We do have, uh, one comment card from community, uh, Mr. Bauer. Um, you have on here you would wish to speak. So please state your name. You have three minutes, sir.
Uh, hi, my name's Bob Bauer. Uh, I live, well, I guess about 700 feet north of here. Um, I'd, I guess there was a neighborhood meeting we never heard about. What is the perimeter that you all are supposed to notify?
Uh, I will go to staff on that.
Chair Simon, um, yes, the, the note, per our land development code, the perimeter is, and this is required by state statute, 300 feet from any surrounding property owner and 1,000 feet for, to, we send a notice to any HOA within a thousand feet. So 300 feet for surrounding property owners and 1,000 feet for HOAs. And that is, that is the minimum standards required by state statutes.
Well, I have to yell at our guy for the HOA. I'm the vice president of the HOA and I haven't heard anything about it. So, um, so some of my concerns are, uh, the amount of parking that's there for, for the shops and specifically that drive-through location there is sketchy at best. And then just the density, again, you know, you guys are talking about how many apartments that we've had. And then you hadn't heard anything from any homeowners around there about the density and, and so forth of the apartments. Well, you're hearing it tonight, it, it's, we've got way too many rental properties in this area. And we're just, you know, being that far away or that close, uh, you know, we're starting to see the, the traffic really get bad out here at the intersection. And also that drive connection on Haskell going south, there is a, another drive connection through the apartments that are being built directly to the, uh, east of us where we could actually drive through down to Williams Field and come across. Um, having that additional connection to Haskell, uh, just kinda creates more of that traffic coming up to that small street. Um, I don't see that Haskell is being proposed to be widened at all. And with those homes that are to the north of Haskell, they have parallel parking along there. And several times people are stopping in the middle of the road because their spaces are all taken up, but they're trying to let someone out or get someone to come to them from those homes. And they're parked in the middle of the road. And then we gotta try and drive around them. Well, if you get that on both sides of people trying to stop in the middle of the road and get to any of these units that are facing Haskell, we're gonna have a even more traffic situations there. People trying to drive around people who are stopped in the middle of the road. Um, people trying to parallel park on both sides of the road, stopping, backing up and so forth, just creating situations that, um, frankly, just gonna upset people and, and anger them. Those are just, you know, the things that I noticed, this is the, the first time of seeing it, so I haven't been able to look at it real hard. But, um, those are the concerns that I have for this, for this particular, uh, project.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Um, would you like to respond to any of his, uh, concerns?
Sure, thanks, Chairman, members of the commission. So, uh, you know, a couple of different items brought up, uh, the commercial parking. Uh, we exceed the code requirement. Uh, we did have more parking in there, but some of the, uh, landscape requirements forced us to remove those. But we do accommodate, we don't see an issue on our end, uh, with meeting those spaces. Uh, the residential project is also, uh, meeting the minimum requirement as well. The other element here is that there is some street parking. Uh, most of it's going to be wiped out along Williams Field and Recker, uh, due to the deceleration lanes that are required. Uh, but there will be, uh, spaces along Haskell. Those are not counted as part of our, uh, calculations. Uh, you know, it is public parking, uh, because it's in the right of way. Uh, but those spaces, you know, would be available for other residents or as well as residents of this project. Uh, the drive-through is a unique design. Uh, one of the tenants of the Gateway Character Area is to not have vehicular uses, uh, facing the street such as drive-throughs. So, uh, even though there are a couple across the street, uh, we wanted to really hide that one as much as possible. So we worked pretty hard with our traffic engineer to come up with a design that will work, has plenty of stacking and is functional. So we, we don't see a problem with it, although it is a unique, uh, design. Uh, the comment on density, uh, you know, we, we hear this a lot in almost every project. And one of the, you know, selling points of this one is that this project is so much less dense and so much less intense, uh, than it, than it would be under the current zoning. So not only from a density standpoint, which the current zoning allows anywhere from 300 to 700 units, we're at 93. Uh, but it's also the intensity of the commercial. Uh, the Gateway Village Center zoning, you know, requires a, uh, floor area ratio of point seven five, you know, very intense type of development. Um, and that's obviously not viable here and it's not what we think makes sense because of, this is more of a residential area. And so we think this project is a benefit to the residents because it's, is gonna reduce the amount of traffic, uh, that could be here otherwise. Last comment on road connections, uh, we did put up quite a fight to not have that connection out to Haskell in our neighborhood meeting last year. Uh, it was a concern of the residents out there to minimize the amount of traffic on their street. But, uh, you know, the, the town really saw the, the purpose of meeting, the intent of the Gateway area. And we recognize that, you know, it, it certainly wouldn't hurt our project and would provide better connectivity for the overall area. So we agreed to go ahead and put that in. And, you know, we, we do think it's gonna be a nice project. This project isn't gated, there's no walls. It's really gonna be a nice, uh, fit to the community, allowing a lot of, uh, interconnectivity.
All right. Is my understanding that this is, uh, did I hear a duplex type product? Did I hear that or am I making that up in my head?
Mr. Chairman, it, so the, it is a for-rent product, single and two-story, and the units are either standalone or duplex.
Okay. So, so it's not a traditional apartment type complex, it's more duplex?
Yeah, you bet. It's, it's, you know, a lot of the build for rent lately has come out with a, just a more single-family conducive type of product. You don't have the big massive buildings, uh, all the homes have rear yards. So they live a lot like a single-family home, uh, just without, you know, the mortgage.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, if there's no questions for the developer or for staff, I'll bring it back up to the DIAS for, um, comment or a motion if there is one. All right, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, and, and my comment on this is, you know, the primary is the fact that the current zoning would allow significantly more units put onto here. So I, I completely understand living in close proximity and seeing this and thinking this is so much multifamily. But the fact of the matter is that they've done a very good job trying to find a unique way to do this. And so things even onto the parking and traffic remediation, all of that would have been exacerbated by the current land use, hence making this much more viable for all parties involved. So, you know, I think it's great and I think they've gone and done a bit of work since we've talked about this with Keith before. And so I appreciate that, um, even down to the, the drive-through. Because I think that's something that, even though it looks strange that they've actually went through some pains to try to, um, create a way to make that work within the character district. So, um, I'm in favor of it. And I think that, you know, we should all keep in mind just that the zoning that's allowed, this is a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comment? Yeah, Commissioner Johns.
Yeah, I would like to follow up. I totally agree with that. It does follow the character, um, concept that, that was put, put forth across the street. I do like the fact that it has a commercial aspect to it. They didn't have to do that. Um, and it is kinda following suit with what's going along the entire road, but it is, does look like it's like stepped back. And I, I see what you mean by it being more of a residential style compared to what's around it, um, in, being the individual buildings and such. And the deviations, I didn't see any issues with the deviations that came up. It follows suit with what you're mentioning, Keith. So, um, I, I think it's a positive project to go in the area. So, um, there's gonna be a lot of cleanup for, in that area, but looking at the aerial, so got a lot of work ahead of them. So, but thank you very much for the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? No? If there's no other comment, I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Commissioner Anderson.
I move to recommend a Town Council approval of GP 21-09, Fred's Place, a minor general plan amendment.
I have a motion to approve the general plan amendment. Do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, I have a second from Commissioner Johns. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any, the, uh, motion passes. Entertain a motion to approve the zoning or deny the zoning.
I'll continue. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 21-12, Fred's Place, as requested, subject to the conditions.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson. Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Commissioner Johns. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. Um, thank you for coming out this evening. We really appreciate the comment. Um, and with that, we'll move on to, uh, our administrative items. Administrative items are for the commission discussion and action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input. Request on any administrative item, uh, person wishing to speak on administrative items should complete a com, public comment card or form indicating the item number on which you wish to address. The commission may or may not accept the public comment. Um, do we have any comments on administrative items? All right, not seeing any. Uh, we'll move on to, um, the Planning Commission meetings from the August 3rd planning session. Um, I will entertain a motion. Chairman, I'd move to approve this presentation. I've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Bianchi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Fay with second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any, motion carries. Communications, um, don't have an executive, executive session tonight that I'm aware of at this point. Um, any report from any members of the commission?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a report. As we've all seen, it's still 110 degrees out and I'd like to make a motion to stop all of that by next month. So, thank you.
By the time you get back from the U P. All right, and Eva, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to take some time today to talk about the M V P awards. Every year, the town gives out awards to employees that exemplify the town's values of bold, driven, kind, or humble. This year, there were over 90 nominations for these four awards. And I'm very proud to say Josh Rogers was nominated for Bold.
Congratulations, Josh.
Commissioner Fay, that is why I loved your comment this evening. Is that Josh's way or is that the town way? I think most times it's a little of both. Samantha Nabotny, who did have to leave early this evening, our planner one, was the person that nominated Josh. And if I could just read a little bit from what her nomination read, she wrote, "When I see the definition of bold, the person who immediately comes to mind is my colleague, Josh Rogers. I can count on Josh to be his authentic self because he speaks up willingly and openly in order to champion ideas and processes for the betterment of Gilbert's community." She further writes, "Josh inspires me to speak up and voice my thoughts and ideas. It is intimidating to speak in opinion for fear it may be rejected or shot down, but I have Josh to thank for helping me build up my courage within myself." So I thought those were very kind and thoughtful words from Samantha. I think the whole department would echo those feelings. And I would also like to thank Ashley McDonald for volunteering to give Josh his first presentation this evening so he could attend that award ceremony. And I'm very pleased to state Josh attended and won the Bold Award.
Here, here, here. Awesome. Well, I've heard that Keith will make you cookies, so. He's not even here. Congratulations, Josh, well deserved.
That was all for this evening.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Eva. Um, we do have an amazing staff, so appreciate all the hard work all of you do and, uh, well deserved. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting is, uh, Wednesday, October 5th, right here. And don't forget that we do have a second meeting on Monday, October 10th, um, next month. So we do have two meetings. Um, with that, have a great rest of your week and hopefully when we meet again, it'll be cooler.
God bless.